We begin the session at 5:31. We need a motion from the floor to go to exec.
So I'll make the motion to go to exec. Um, there's discussion sensitive legal matter and that's...
That's fine for now. Seconded by Mary Kay. All those in favor? Motion passes 60-0.
No, it's 4-0.
Sorry, 4. Right, because... I already read it. She said 84. I can correct you. Alright. Go on, check that. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We begin with the first release of this flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, thank you for joining us. Unfortunately, there is no Yankee game tonight, so we can go on for hours. Alright. Administrator remarks, if you don't mind discussing. Ben, will you off the run tonight?
We're happy to kick it off. Thank you, Dr. Janboor.
Thank you.
Last Wednesday was our first professional learning day of the 2017-2018 school year. So I'd like to thank the members of the PPS administrative team, Mrs. Elizabeth Kennedy, Mr. Joshua LaFell, and especially Ms. Danielle Souley, who helped from the very beginning in terms of our offerings, the design of our offerings, all the way to the logistics for the day of. Our district-wide professional learning team met yesterday and began our initial analysis of this feedback and the survey results that we received. And we'll be taking those results back to our building level teams and, of course, to our leadership team and working to incorporate that feedback into our future professional learning sessions. And I had the pleasure today of learning beside two grade levels of teachers at JFK, working with Teachers College Consultants. So please know that we should all feel really good about the direction that literacy is going in this district and even better about the professionalism of our teacher staff. I sat there for, I don't know how many hours, and, you know, we have teachers who already have a really solid knowledge base who just want to get better and better. They were open to any type of feedback that this consultant was providing and students were at the center of every one of their questions. So we should be really proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gosh and Ms. Carlson. Welcome to board.
Good evening. Just wanted to remind everyone that we are holding a bus driver recruitment fair this Thursday, October 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the district office. So please tell your friends, tell your neighbors, tell your family and anyone who might be interested to come online and meet with us this Thursday. Dr. Janboor, Dr. Henning, Mr. Berardo and I are here with the Brewster Sports Foundation to continue our conversation regarding the much-needed athletic field renovations of our baseball and softball fields. We discussed the opportunities that we have and the challenges we face. And one important recommendation that came out of that meeting was the need to establish an athletic fields renovation committee. So we will be providing a long view approach if timeline prevents. Our architects from KGND are here tonight and they'll explain some of the challenges that we face with zoning and the DEP. We'll also be with that committee. We'll be reviewing the initial scope of the renovations and making recommendations for additions, subtractions, and then establish a budget and identify potential funding sources. So Brewster Sports Foundation is actively soliciting community members. We thank them for that, to assist us on the committee. And we hope to schedule our first meeting at the end of November. Facilities news. The BHS elevator replacement project is under final review with SED, but it is seven months after our initial submission and that is concerning because that was supposed to be considered a mechanical-only review, which is typically the quickest turnaround. So we submitted our project, our HDAC upgrade project at JFK this past August. So we're very concerned about the timing of SED approval and our ability to perform any work this summer. And we'll also ask our architects to give us an update on that. And that concludes my comments for the season.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. And Dr. Henning, how are we doing today?
Great. Dr. Janboor, we're trustees. Just a few items. This week is Board of Education Recognition Week, and I want to thank Dr. Janboor, Ms. Masika, Ms. Kakau, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Niles, Ms. Nilson, and Ms. O'Brien for their devotion and dedication to our school district. If you didn't know this, there are a few things that they are responsible for doing on behalf of student staff, parents, and the community at large. A few of those include creating a shared vision for the future of education, setting the direction of the school district to achieve the highest student performance, providing accountability for student achievement results, developing a budget and presenting it to the community, aligning district resources to improve achievement, supporting a healthy school district culture in which to do the work and to learn, and so much more. And they do that unpaid. And that's just a few things that they do on behalf of us and so there'll be recognition thanks to their PTA, PTSA representatives tonight. So thank you again, Board of Education, for all the work that you do for the children, staff, parents, and community. I hope that you're able to attend our first family university, which is Thursday, October 26th. It's sponsored by the Putnam Coalition Communities that Care and the Brewster Community Learning Center. There are workshops for parents, for middle schoolers, and for high school students. So I hope that you've had an opportunity to check out the registration form and also the workshops and register. There's some pretty amazing ones. I suggest for parents of high school students to check out Hidden Mischief. It's an interactive workshop. You'd be surprised at what your children hide in the bedroom. Workshops for high school students, ones that have to do with learning to manage and cope with anxiety and stress, a very popular topic, as well as for middle schoolers, how social media can mess you up. That's their title. And that one's actually being taught by Brewster high school students. So that's pretty awesome. In addition, on October 25th, at 7:30 in the library at CB Star, members of the strategic coherence planning team will be gathered to discuss the strategic coherence plan and how the proposed logo is a symbol of our commitment to 21st century learning for all students. A few high school students will be present so that we can also hear their perspectives. Our students are our most important asset, just in case you didn't know that. Parents of high school students will receive a notice through their backpack this week, which involves the following information. I will be interviewing all 287 seniors between November and April with Ms. Boyler and Ms. Gosh. The purpose of those interviews is to be able to glean from them their experience as students having spent 13 years in a school district. Some of them started in kindergarten and they exit. And we don't capture that information that helps us to improve upon our school district. You know, it's a loss. So we're going to convene with small groups of students, four to five students, probably interviewing a few times a week. And I think we'll get through those and those questions will be shared with parents in the bare backpack notice. In addition, we're restarting the superintendent student advisory, which will meet with about 15 to 20 students in grades nine through 12, once or twice a month, to hear their suggestions for how to deal with some of the issues that we've been discussing. We're also identifying a school climate survey to administer to all of our students in grades six through 12, as well as a climate survey that will be shared and custom for staff and for parents. And that information is contained in a bare backpack notice that'll go out at the end of the week. Ms. Gosh, Ms. Boyler, and I met to debrief with the demo congress this afternoon. They held a convention, a discussion on diversity on October 12th. Fortunately, that was the week that all of us here who was at MSB, so we weren't able to participate. I heard it was very successful and they gleaned a lot of information from that. It was gratifying this afternoon. Julie was there, our student representative, along with Ms. Gosh and Ms. Boyler, Ms. Cloud, and Ms. Lodge, to hear students describe how important it is, from their perspective, to have opportunities to be exposed to other students that they don't know. They talked about segregation among students, especially students whose first language is not English. They're looking beyond superficial ways to get to know students that center around genuine interest and curiosity about a person's culture and background. They're especially motivated about making this happen before they go off to college. They don't want to go to college and not have had some of these experiences. So kudos to them. Some of the ideas include, that come from this group so far, preliminary ideas as they're going to further develop, is to require a diversity course for all high school students and to organize field trips to places outside of Brewster so that students gain exposure to cultural institutions in New York City, which is only an hour away. And one idea, they may go take the train rather than taking a coach bus. So that's some of the ideas that were very exciting to hear about and they'll be further developing those. And it will actually reconvene with them in December after they do some additional planning, as well as share their ideas with all the faculty at the high school. What is clear is that these students want to leave a legacy where they change how students interact and get to know each other well beyond their established peer groups. And they have plans and we're meeting again and we hope to bring forth that information that will only further improve this wonderful school district. So I think that's enough.
Alright, bye. Good luck with those plans. So, good evening, everyone. For reasons that I'm hoping everyone will understand, my remarks tonight will be brief. Needless to say, the past two weeks have been very challenging for all of us here in the Brewster Central School District community. News of an alleged inappropriate relationship between a staff member and a high school student is a very serious matter. Since first being alerted to this possibility, the resources of our entire school system have been in a total response mode. There was no gap, no uncertainty about what to do. From that very first hour forward, there has been constant communication here around this table and these people, with our attorneys and, of course, law enforcement. This is everyone's top priority. Because it is an active investigation, there are necessary restrictions on what we can say and how we can convey it. This is a great country where everyone's rights need to be respected. We in a school district in turn have to be very mindful of this. It is a delicate balancing act. Nonetheless, we all have questions and we want answers yesterday. That's how it is to be parents, and we are all parents. While it is frustrating to be so deliberate, it is indeed necessary. The response of the community so far has been understanding and supportive. For that, we are very grateful. We are also very thankful for how all the professionals have stepped up to the plate and supported the district at this time. Based upon their work, I can assure you that the safety and security of all of our children is our foremost concern. Thank you again for your concerns and your support. We move on now to Section B, Presentations, Recognition, and Discussion. I'm sorry. Thank you. It's good to have help in the room. Our student representatives, of course. Julie and Elizabeth are here tonight to share some good news.
On October 12th, Democratic Congress hosted a convention on diversity. Students broke up into small groups and discussed cultural issues and school potential solutions. On October 14th, MOU UN hosted a conference in the ILC and they hosted about 75 participants from four to three schools. The group began planning for the event six months in advance and plans to make it an annual event, given the positive feedback they received. And last week, freshman Level 1 students created an artifact exhibit in the ILC. Students could visit the ILC all day to learn about the art, to learn from the artistic and educational pieces that the peers created. The girls JV and varsity volleyball teams hosted the volleyball career yesterday to raise money and awareness for breast cancer. They recognized three survivors and overall had a very successful win. The girls varsity field hockey team won their pink game where they raised $587 for a breast cancer awareness outreach. Our soccer teams qualified for their sectional tournament. The boys hosted Helms and lost a tough game at Overland. The girls lost to Firemills by two points. In swimming, Alexis Mark placed fourth in the 100 breast stroke and 100 freestyle over the weekend at Swinging Rivers. Both of our cross-country teams finished second at their league lead last week. Lastly, our field hockey team will be playing in their sectional tournament this week and the football team will be wrapping up their season this week.
Thank you both. So for now, we'll move on to Presentations, Recognition. But we're going to flip item 5 with item 1 and begin with informational presentation of proposed policy, 5510. Mr. Joe Hill will be on this panel.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Janboor. I just wanted to take a quick moment to discuss this policy which pertains to the release of student data. The policy committee is actually recommending a more restrictive set of language that is, than the law outlines. And so we should probably have a couple of some technicalities of that. The purpose behind this is that we currently do not have a policy that outlines or provides any type of guidelines as to how we should release student information. So occasionally, and actually probably more than just occasionally, we release positive news to websites, newspapers, local publications, to promote the accomplishments of our students. So what this policy does is it outlines what we would release and what parents have the right to opt out of releasing. Mr. Joe Hill, would you mind talking a little bit about FERPA and its relationship to this policy?
Okay. Just real quickly and without more inside baseball than you know or why. The basic law dealing with confidentiality in the student setting is called FERPA. It's also known as the Buckley Act and the Buckley Amendment after Senator Jim Buckley. Years ago, in Galaxia Far Far Away, he was a senator from New York and sponsored it. So it says a couple of things. And what it says is that a parent or an eligible student, when a student becomes eligible when they're 18, can control a couple of basic decisions. Number one, who gets access to confidential information from student records? And number two, a right to dispute information records that might be inaccurate from listening. So the second thing you need to know, that's the basic right of FERPA that extends to parents and students, is that there are restrictions on what information schools can give out about students without parental permission. And there's like a hierarchy. And for some things, you need parental permission. For most things, really, if the district wanted to release an IEP or a report card, transcript, a disciplinary record, that's obviously highly protective stuff. And you need specific parental consent for that. There are some exceptions for things like health and safety emergencies or business subpoena. But basically, you need parental consent to release stuff outside the school district if they didn't understand the law. Where direct information comes up is that direct information by definition are items from a student's record that if they were disclosed, they wouldn't necessarily be harmful or prejudicial if they're out there. So there are things, like Michelle said, that are more positive things. Honors a student has achieved, height and weight, not for me, but for a student athlete. Things such as name, address, even email, and, you know, previous school dependent where the student's going, when. When I was in school, the stuff that you might see in the back of a high school yearbook as the direct information for somebody. So for this neutral stuff and positive stuff, the situation gets flipped. Here, we don't need parental permission if we adopt the policy Michelle is talking about. What we do is, the default assumption is that we have permission to send that stuff out to the newspaper about what happened in the high school softball game, or we can put it in a playbook. The music is the spring musical. That out carried, you know, this and did that and she wants to go harder and all that good stuff. So that allows you to do that without specifically getting the consent every time. It's for the positive things generally. And it will allow you to do that. And how does the parent know that they can opt out? Because that's what they do with direct information. The district sends a notice to the parents as part of that annual, the annual notices that you get about the student handbook or things like that. You might get it in the calendar. And the parents will be told that you have the right to opt out. If you don't like your name, your summer notice, identity, your name and address going to be in the playbook or the yearbook, you can opt out of that and decide not to do it. But if you don't, we'll assume it's okay. We can do this as positive stuff and this policy enables us to do it. And that's basically what direct information is and stuff that's generally good stuff, wouldn't be harmful. And we would like to be able to give it out if we can to advertise the positive. And we'll assume you're okay with it unless you as a parent specifically tell us you want to opt out. And that's basically it.
So it's another layer of administrative oversight, but again, detecting student data based on what the parent wishes to disclose or not. So this is not on the agenda for tonight. It would be on our next agenda. But we wanted to extend the attention to student privacy. We wanted to discuss it here and see if the board had any questions.
Thank you. Thank you both.
If I could just mention one other thing, which is okay, Dr. Janboor. As Michelle mentioned, this actually is a very restrictive, meaning it protects the privacy of students and will sell down a broad direct information policy. Because if you just said you make this direct information available to anyone, then someone could, for the asking, be provided with names, address, email, telephone number, graduation. This doesn't allow for that. This says that the district decides it's something that you want to do, like a playbook, a yearbook. It's that type of manner distribution that we're organizing. So it's a very narrow exercise of that right of direct information.
Can I just ask one question? Right now, without the policy, the district is allowed to put a child's name in a playbook or in sports, you know. But now with the policy, they'll still be allowed to do that, but it gives the parents the right to opt out. Is that the difference?
That's pretty much it. It gives them the opt-out right. In many districts, actually, what they do in the beginning of the year is they may send it out to the sense, to be able to use someone's image. You know, if they want to give it to the newspaper, they may do something like that. So many districts, yes, it's a set to the parent to tell someone they don't have to go wrong this time.
Thank you both very much. And now we're back at the top of the list and we have good news here. Our friends in Putnam know the wish of the BOCES right here to help us celebrate a student of distinction. And Dr. Allen, I think you're ready to lead the way. Good evening, everyone.
My name is Lynn Abbott. I'm an assistant superintendent at Putnam Northern West Gosees. I'm joined tonight by John McCarthy, also an assistant superintendent for Putnam Northern West Gosees. And we're here on behalf of our district superintendent, Dr. James Ryan, who could not be here tonight. But we wish to extend a heartfelt thank you to the First Board of Education, to Dr. Henning Tiedma for providing us with the opportunity to recognize and celebrate one of our students of distinction from our Career and Technical Education Department. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jim Belucci, one of our career academy principals, to make further introductions and tell you more about our special student.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. I'd like to ask Rachel Tomasetti, Stu, and Chef Suzie Loprad to come up. So I am Jim Belucci. I'm one of the principals down at the tech center. We have approximately 1,200 students cycle through the tech center every day. And if you do the math, one of them is here tonight. And we only do about 10 students of distinction here. So you're looking at probably maybe the top 10%. So we don't get to stand in that kind of excellence often. She's an inspiration to me as a principal, inspires my work and all the students and staff around her. I could talk for a long time. I want, thank you. So I want Suzie Loprad, the teacher, to come up and really talk a little bit more about Rachel and her work.
So I'm Suzie Loprad. I'm Rachel's culinary and hospitality instructor. And first off, I want to say thank you for sharing her with us. She spends two sessions with us. So she takes double classes at this. She takes the culinary and hospitality class where she learns table service skills, culinary skills, world cuisines, and entrepreneurial business concepts, such as marketing and cost control. So she does that for the first two hours. And then the second two hours, she takes advanced baking, where she, for two hours, gets to learn how to bread cakes next week. And it's a fun class. I wish I was in that class. And it's really nice to see Rachel smile. And the kids that come to us, they come to school with a big smile. They love it. They all say that, you know, I love coming to Boces. And oftentimes, when your school is closed, guess where they are? They come to Boces. So they even come to school on their day off. That's how much they enjoy our program. So I just want to say thank you. Over the past year, I've watched Rachel find an environment that she thrives in. The experience has been great for her. She's become more focused. She has a goal. And, you know, she's found a new group of friends that she shares common interests with, which is food. Food, eating it, cooking it, and the joy of sharing it, which in depth, it's fallen. So, you know, it's nice to see her find her voice and to watch her grow. So with that, we recognize you, a student of distinction, and you're very helpful. Thank you for sharing. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mary Kay Nelson and Dr. Henning to come out. We have a couple of things to present to Rachel. And I'd also like to thank her family and friends and really the whole community, Boces and Brewster, for sharing Rachel with us. If you don't have a loved and improved family, you should because your work, it's what every parent really wants for their child. She's unbelievable. So you should be in with pride. This is your moment. You've really ruined the curve for your younger siblings. But at this time, I'd like, Dr. Tara. Can you read this award?
The student of distinction, October 2017. This certificate is awarded to Rachel Tomasetti in recognition of your outstanding leadership skills, academic progress, and community spirit. Thank you so much for sharing yourself with us.
I met Rachel last year when Boces, I think it was a spring event where all the culinary students presented, meaning they fed us. And I was so proud of Rachel and I'm so proud of all the students. But, you know, you're doing wonderful things. So congratulations.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like the family to join us in that.
Okay. Moving down the list now, we're here to talk about our capital project budget update. And we've got our friends from KGND and Triton here. Thank you, folks. Welcome aboard. Hi, Michelle. Hello. May you be the spokesperson, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, she was. Better luck next month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here to update you on the budget and also the progress. As you're well aware, by late July, we realized that we had a bigger task than we thought in getting JFK online for school in the fall. Team contractors, Triton, the construction managers, our office at KGND, and significantly the staff here at Brewster, Andy Bates and his team, all pulled together in the same direction and we got it done. And we're very proud of what we got done. The board has acted on a number of change order related to this and they have board that they're acting on now. We're proud to say that the work is done. It's come out very well. Moving down the list now, we're here to talk about our capital project budget update, and we've got our friends from KGND and Triton here. Thank you, folks. Welcome aboard. Hi, Michelle. Hello. May you be the spokesperson, huh? Oh, she was. Better luck next month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here to update you on the budget and also the progress. As you're well aware, by late July, we realized that we had a bigger task than we thought in getting JFK online for school in the fall. Team contractors, Triton, the construction managers, our office at KGND, and significantly the staff here at Brewster, Andy Bates and his team, all pulled together in the same direction, and we got it done. And we're very proud of what we got done. The board has acted on a number of change orders related to this, and they have board that they're acting on now. We're proud to say that the work is done, it's come out very well. We are on budget, and we are moving forward. What I'm going to show you tonight basically breaks down the projects in the bond budget into what was previously completed. You can see up there, we have roofing projects at CB Star and, excuse me, is that the... the middle, excuse me, the high school. Those came in, and let me step back and explain what you're looking at. The first left-hand column is the construction estimate for what we thought the project was going to cost before we put it out to the... The second column is the contract award amount. The third column is the value of the change orders through the course of the project. The fourth column is the project total, and this is just construction costs. This does not include soft costs and other costs. And the last column is basically the difference between the budget estimate and the final construction cost. And if you see a negative number in front of that, that means that that went over budget and that amount came out of the contingency. So if you look at these three projects, the roofing projects, the district-wide security, and the operations to the high school, we were over budget on the roofing projects, and we had substantial savings on the high school and small savings on the district-wide security. And that was all work that basically was completed coming into the last school year. The next group that we're talking about, we're calling the accessory building projects. These are not the school buildings, but we have the transportation building where we did work, and we are still doing work in adding a generator. We have the new concession stand at the varsity competition field, and we have the alterations to the administration building or the district office. Again, on these, we had savings everywhere except the concession stand, and the concession stand really is included in the cost of JFK in terms of contractual execution. There was a modest amount of change orders associated with this work. We did not break it out for the purpose of this table, but it is a low four, maybe, maybe a five-digit number. But that project proceeded very well and came in on budget after many attempts to get it done. And then the last group, on the current school building projects, which are the alterations to CB Star and the additions and operations to JFK Elementary School. You can see we had significant savings at CB Star. That project went very smoothly and was completed on time without a great deal of stress, although last week of every project always has its good moments. And JFK Elementary School, you can see that we are beyond our original budget, but it is important to note to the board and to the community that the original budget did not include the work in the auditorium. And a great portion of that money, where we are beyond the budget, is actually the cost of the work in the auditorium. So even with all of the scrambling and all of the correcting of conditions that we found this summer, we performed very well against the budget, and we are proud of that. The bottom line, you can see the difference, you know, cumulative difference of all those projects, where we have a one... Get my glasses focused here. Basically, a $1.7 million of savings against the construction budget, just on construction costs. But to complete the picture, we need to consider the other costs. So at the top, you'll see the total from those previous sheets is that first line at the top. The current construction contingency is $150,000, which basically, we are, there are change orders still being negotiated. And we feel that that number will cover what we believe is the fair number that we can arrive at for those changes. Furniture technology is a line that is furniture, is free sub... Explamatory technology is the wiring and the devices that are the backbone of the computer and data systems in schools. Project soft costs include the cost of the members of the team that are not contractors, the architect, the construction managers, the attorneys, the consultants for hazardous abatement monitoring, the cost of testing agencies, and other soft costs related to the project to ensure that the right work is being done and it is being done correctly. So that gives us a subtotal of $37.7 million. We then, below that line, are holding two lines for work intended to proceed next summer, which is the Phase II site work project, which is additional site work mostly around JFK Elementary School. It's paving, and it is for everybody's education. That is not part of the work that was done this year because of DDP regulations. We had to stay, we had a limit on how much disturbance we could create in the soil. How much dirt can you expose without having to have what's called a stormwater prevention land, which becomes an expensive, expensive exercise. And the work, the areas that we disturbed this year are still considered disturbed until the grass that has been planted on them has been established. And that, if things go as they should, you know, barring some drought next spring, that should be mid to late spring next year. We should have established, establish that ground cover to the satisfaction of the Department of Environmental Protection, and that brings us back to zero, and we can start disturbing around elsewhere on campus. And the next line is the work at the Brewster High School elevator. As Victor alluded to before, that is up at SED. They have reviewed the project. They've asked us for some additional information, which we should have back up to them by the end of this week. Typically with SED, when you get comments and they ask you for an addendum, when you file an addendum, you get approval within hours, not even days, to proceed. So that is inevitably approvable. We expect to have a building permit for that work in hand very shortly. That brings us down to those bottom lines to say how much have we committed today between what has been spent and what are we committed to spend on the elevator and the site work? And we are at $38.9 million, and we are almost at what you have been authorized by the public to borrow. There is a remaining uncommitted fund of $235,000 to be used to improve the schools within the bounds of bond management. And that's where we are today.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from the board on this topic?
I'd just like to ask a few things of Joe, just, you know, to the board and the community. So you mentioned the, the timing of SED and the approval of the elevator project. You kind of mentioned earlier, it's supposed to be a short turnaround time. We are contemplating an upgrade to the HKAC system at JFK, which is a much more complicated project. Based on SED's timeline, do you expect, do you anticipate us having approval in advance of next spring?
Well, predicting the timeline on SED is an exercise for all of the apparel. So I will say this. If they match what they did with the elevator and turn it around in seven months, we will have approval in March, mid to late March, which would potentially let us proceed with work next summer. It would be very tight. Would much rather have approval by mid-January, and the reason I say that is there is, there's a couple of weeks of work to take the documents that SED has and turn them into bid documents and to advertise the bid that they have on the street. And this is an air conditioning project, and there are machines that are wrong V-guides. Once you order them, and they would be ordered by the contractor to whom the project is awarded, they take anywhere from eight to 16 weeks to get. And if you back, back out of those numbers and say, I want to start putting machines on the roof on July 15th, then you really want to order them April 1st. So we are very much in jeopardy if March 15th is when they issue an approval for the project to proceed. Odds are very good that we will not be able to properly bid and buy that work for construction next summer, based on the feelings of SED today. There's constant conversation about what they're going to do to improve their turnaround. This conversation has been going on as long as I've been in the business, and turnaround time keeps getting longer. So I don't want to paint the rosier picture that would be harsh.
And then the, the other half of that equation is the funding. So obviously, this summer took place, and we're improving a lot of change orders tonight. If you look at JFK, an incredible amount of work took place during a very short period of time. The building is very old, as Joe mentioned, and with that, there were lots of unforeseen conditions that required us to issue change orders for remedial work. And as noted in Joe's presentation, that took a hit on our project budget and the remaining contingency available for things like the HKAC project. So with the SED issue of project approval, we'll also be discussing during the budget process, a way in which that we can afford to fund this project if, in fact, we do get SED approval. So that'll be a conversation that we have during the budget season. That's all I got, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. We'll move our attention now to a topic called "The Extension of Veterans Exemption Beyond Ten-Year Statute." Thank you, Mr. Carlson, please.
So back in February, the board actually approved the Cold War Veterans Exemption, which was an extension of the original Veterans Exemption. It was approved by the board back in 2013. So this presentation is actually, most of it was provided to the board this past February, when, again, they passed the initial extension. However, the legislation recently changed, which now allows us to provide the exemption beyond the 10-year period that was established in the initial legislation. In order to do that, the board is required to pass a resolution extending it. Presentation? No, no.
Never shared.
Oh, it's not shared? All right. One second. All right, well, I will go on. So the, the legislation, again, allows us to extend the exemption for the entire duration that the homeowner remains in place. Again, the original legislation had a 10-year term, so this would just be extending it for the entire term of the homeownership. Based on the numbers, the potential tax shift, or the tax shift that's in place, is about $2 per household annually. And again, the board had already passed this exemption, so this is just extending it beyond the 10-year term. Each of the other municipalities surrounding us, the town of Southeast, town of Patterson, and Putnam County, have already approved the exemption, and they are in the process of approving the extension. And we will ask the board, if the board is willing to, we will put it on a resolution for, for next, next board agenda. Good job? All right. Sorry, sorry for the technical difficulties.
Sorry, I'm good.
I did all that for memory. Is that a PDF?
I'll leave it up. Just let me know when you want to go notes.
You know what? I mean, just scroll, scroll to that next slide. Okay, so I review this again. The board already adopted the resolution for the Cold War exemption back in February. Had an initial term of 10 years, next slide. Each of the towns and county are extending the exemption, the yearly 10-year term. Here's the exemption that was passed back in February, 15% exemption up to $54,000 assessed value. There are 46 and 17 parcels in towns of Southeast and Patterson, respectively, out of a total of 9,415 parcels. And there's a $2 per year annual increase on the other homestead owners. So again, if the board is willing, we can put a resolution on the November 14th agenda for the extension of the Veterans Exemption. I apologize for the technical difficulties.
I'm not sure what I missed. But if you've already approved it, so for 10 years, why is there an increase now versus... I'm thinking, okay, after 10 years.
No, you're right. There is no increase now. Again, I pulled the presentation from what was, what was shown back in February. So there is no additional increase. It's just carrying it forward in year 11, as opposed to falling off in year 10. So again, you're right, there is no additional increase. Any other questions?
So all the questions, then, is it the will of the board to have this on the next agenda, 14?
Yes.
Fine.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're going to look at the multi-tiered system of support, otherwise known as the NTSS. This gosh.
Good evening, Ed. You've heard for many years us talk about NTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support. So just a quick reminder, when we talk about NTSS, we're really talking about an umbrella term, right? That talks about the academic component of learning through a response to intervention approach, and the social-emotional aspect through positive behavioral intervention supports, or PBIS. So it's really the integration of these two approaches that provide a comprehensive way to support student learning. In addition to the comprehensiveness of this approach, it's also proactive. We're done with the wait-and-fail model. We are consistently and constantly monitoring student progress. We have our, our timely and appropriate supports based on what the limited need is, and we are working as a team and having the collective expertise around the table to make sure that students receive the supports in order to be successful. You've seen this, this graphic before in several different presentations, and again, as a reminder, this represents the supports that students receive and the percent of students that access that support within these, within these tiers. So again, we're talking about the integration of the academic and the behavioral, and really looking at, when we think, when we talk about tier one, it's something that everybody gets, right? And so what do we have in terms of support within the classroom from an academic and social-emotional perspective that helps students access that curriculum? And as we move up through the tiers, we have our tier two supports, which of course are smaller groups and more targeted support, on through to tier three, which is, which is very intensive support. So what this plan does, the NTSS plan, which is up for your approval tonight, it outlines the specific supports by tiers by each school level. In some cases, K5, some cases, 612, some cases, K12. So in terms of why we, we need to do this, what this plan... what this plan does is it outlines how we intend to be proactive and provide support to our students. And again, it avoids a wait-to-fail model. Our state department has talked about this being a K-5 requirement, but we have expanded that. So we have this type of mindset throughout the system. And what this document also does is it helps us to further ground our common approach, common language, and how we identify and support students who are struggling throughout different areas of our academic program. So some brief takeaways. This is not new. This started in the 2013-14 school year with a K-12 committee. And each year, as we're getting better and better at it, we're continuing to refine our practice. So again, this is not a change of philosophy. It is the way we do business. And as we, like I said, as we get better, we tweak and continually improve. Again, and within this plan, you'll see that each school has outlined their academic and social-emotional supports. You'll also see a section devoted to academic intervention services, which is something that is a state requirement based on New York State assessment results. But again, we weave that into the broader MTSS structure. We also want this to be a living document. So this is not something that people would put on a shelf and collect us. This is something that we access and we continually go to as an additional resource in order to support our students. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
So just for the audience's sake, we know the school system is invested for the younger groups, it uses Ruler, for the older groups, it uses COE. PBIS stands alongside of that. It's a way of categorizing students in need or not in need of help. But help is still up to the system to define.
It is, it is. Everything is filtered through this integrated MTSS structure. It's how we solve problems. It's how we talk about curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And it's how we turn it to the business now.
Thank you. Okay. And last but not least, Dr. Henne here has helped me out with this one, I think. Board of Education members?
Oh, yes, we are. We have two speed PTA, PTSA presidents. Both Ms. Beal and Ms. Kowaleski, if you would kindly come up. And Ms. Cipione is not feeling well this evening. So she offers her apologies and her thanks as well.
So do you, if we were first, show who's going to speak? If we're last, I have to speak. Good evening, Dr. Henne Piedmont. Thank you for inviting us this evening to recognize the Board of Education. The Brewster Central School District, PTSA and PTAs are happy to be here to recognize all of you. Dr. Danlor, Ms. Sonia Messica, Ms. Diane O'Brien, Ms. Mary Kay Nielsen, Ms. Kristen Cattell, Mr. Glenn Allen, and Ms. Kara Conahan. How do we express in just a few moments what our Board of Education members spend countless hours doing? We can simply say thank you for the amount of time each of you spend on decisions that while may seem simple to many, are actually anything but. These board members have to look at all angles of each decision and how it affects not just one component of our district, but many. How do we point out to those that cannot comprehend that the job of a Board of Education member is not a paid position? The only payment they receive is the joy and the success of the policies they've implemented, a fiscally responsible budget that's passed, or a student who's offered the assistance in our schools that enables he or she to persevere. Our school members are charged with representing all of our education interests in the state, local, and federal level. No small task. We worry about the here and now and in our own homes. They worry about the now and later and in everyone's homes. Our Board of Education members are individuals who bring many different talents to the table for one common goal: the educational futures of all our students. This recognition week is highlighted over the course of an evening or a week. The work our Board of Education members do is over the course of many evenings and many weeks and many years. While our thanks seem simple, please know it is spoken with the utmost sincerity. To show you our gratitude for the Board of Education members and the service they contribute and the ongoing support, the PTSA and PTAs of Brewster have made a $300 donation to the National PTA Disaster Relief Fund, in your name. The National PTA Disaster Relief Fund was established to respond to tragedies that grievously disrupt a school or education system in the event of a disaster. State leaders and the National PTA work together to disperse these funds to the areas of greatest need. This donation will ensure that the schools and communities have the resources they need to restore normalcy in the faces of hardship and adversity. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we appreciate the kindness and especially how you decided to distribute this gift. But in fairness too, we have to say, you know, we're pretty lucky here in Brewster. Our work is really shared with your work. Our PTAs are there throughout the entire effort. And we value your work. You are the true partners to the board. So thank you for being there all the time. We move on to everybody came here for. These are the action items. The tempo is going to pick up a little bit now. And we're going to start right away with the approval of some change orders, the aforementioned change orders. You see them all there. Mr. Carlson will help guide us a little bit, I guess. But this is what we were talking about in our group. Okay, fine. I know where I'm going to be tomorrow morning. Wednesday mornings is when I commit to sign these things. So take a motion, please, for your consideration of this particular action item. Thank you both down there, Ms. Nielsen and Mr. Cobb. Questions or comments from the board concerning this action item? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes seven?
Seven.
Seven to zero. Action item number two, more change orders. Mr. Carlson, nothing?
We broke them out to by building. So the first action item related to CB Star change orders, again, as Joe Riley from KJMD mentioned, CB Star was a very, very successful project. We had a very few issues. JFK, on the other hand, was a very challenging project. You'll note the excess change orders for the JFK project.
Well, that is true too. There was more discovery involved with JFK.
Fifty-seven year old buildings.
Yep, understood. Okay, so we'll take a motion, please, for your consideration of this action item. I'm looking down there right now, Ms. Messica and Ms. O'Brien. Thank you both. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes seven to zero. Action item number three, pertains to the approval to participate in the New York State School and Municipal Energy Consortium. And we do this practically every year.
Yes, Brewster's actually been a member since 2006. And we cooperatively bid commodities for natural gas and electricity. And we do that for a number of reasons. One, to ensure competition among providers. And then also for stability to protect us in the event of a natural or man-made disaster that would negatively affect energy prices. We actually are able to lock in for a three-year period. And that's what we're requesting this year.
Right, and we usually show savings by doing this.
Yeah, it's cost avoidance by locking in at those prices. And again, that protects us.
Thank you. So we'll take a motion, please, for your consideration of this action item? A little missing. Okay, Glenn, you mentioned this time, very, this arrangement really taxing. Okay, fine. I've got a motion, I've got it seconded. All those questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes seven to zero. Action item number four is the acceptance of a donation for instructional supplies and approval of budget amendment number four. Mr. Carlson?
Yes, we would like to thank the Brewster Health Club for their donation to CB Star and Wells Middle School, $500. Thank you.
This isn't easy one. It's always easy to accept donations. Take a motion, please. I can actually see it, I can feel it. Okay, Mary Kay and Kristen. Got it. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, of course, I'm seeing none from my highest club. All those in favor? The motion passes seven to zero. Who says you can't have fun in your board? Approval of multi-tiered system of supports plan, Ms. Gosh?
This.
This is what you're talking about?
Yes.
My God. Okay, so we'll take a motion, please, for your consideration of this important multi-tiered system of support. Okay, Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Messica? Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes seven to zero. Last but not least, is the approval of Ms. Gosh's favorite, second reading. All of those. Are we coming down the home stretch still? Yeah?
Constant improvement.
All right. We'll keep hanging in there. Take a motion, please, for your consideration of this approval of policies? Back to the top again. Mary Kay and Kristen. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, next time, I promise you, the November 14th, we're going to start off with Carrie and Glenn. You're going to get a lot of work done there. You guys can take the 14th off. All right. Move our attention down to the consent agenda. We're losing that once again. We'll take a motion, please, for your consideration of the consent agenda. Carrie and Glenn. 14th came earlier this year. All right. Questions or comments concerning the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Remarks? What remarks? Where is yours? What have you guys been up to lately?
Okay, there were five of us. And Dr. Valerie Henne Piedmont, you attended the New York State School Boards Association at Lake Placid just two weeks ago. And it was a great convention. There were a lot of workshops to attend. We had a real bonding experience. And it was wonderful to enjoy Lake Placid as well as the convention. I'm not going to talk too much about the workshops that I went to. I did just want to bring one up and share it specifically with Liz Kennedy because it has to do with special ed. And the woman that presented, I'm going to give you the name, Barbara Borison. Not sure if you're familiar with her, but she lives in Westchester County. And the reason I'm sharing it is because she focuses on inclusion. She provides professional development. And I know we do have, we do work right now with Julie Costin at Syracuse. But if at some point we need to bring on anyone else or, you know, or do more PD, additional PD, I found her workshop to be wonderful. And her focus was specifically on autism. So I just wanted to share that with you and also with Valerie and the board. And it was very, very worthwhile. So that's my two cents.
One of the benefits of, you know, multiple people going to the convention is we can kind of tag team. You go to this one, I go to this one, and we share all of our notes. It's no secret, my love of technology and how we use it in the classroom. But I learned a great, great symbol, SAMR, S-A-M-R. And Valerie Shaking Grant, she probably started that this is new for me. It's one thing to take technology and substitute it for traditional, you know, pen and paper that you're asked. A, you alterate, I think it was alterations. And modify the use, so you're using technology to modify what you would normally be using a pen and paper for. And then the R is redefinition, redefining your end product that you could never, you couldn't do it with a pen and paper. And the technology just makes it completely different. And, you know, so I just said in three minutes what they took an hour to go over. But it was just so eye-opening here. I thought, you know, oh, you know, we do all of that. And I said, "Redefinition, okay, I need to look into redefinition, make sure we're redefining." You know, so that was my word for the day that day. But again, it was a great time to, you know, kind of get as much information. And we were all kind of looking for each other to say, "Okay, did you hear this? And guess what I learned?" And I look forward to like a workshop that we can put together so that we could all share with each other how to be, and ultimately, it's how to be a better board. So a better board member and then a better board serving our schools.
I'm just going to add, I think I went to some more boring, more, you know, board work, line work. But I think crucial information to just keep us making sure we're doing the right thing and heading in the right direction. But one, there were two that I actually went to that were very interesting. And they basically had you at the outdoor classroom. And how different districts in the state utilize the outdoors for... I'm always thinking, oh, you know, gardening, science, maybe ecology. But it was amazing. They were able to connect business class because then the food that was grown was then sold and how you market that. I mean, it was just, any classroom you could imagine, they were able to create an outdoor scenario for it. And the accomplishments and how the kids across the board, because there's no language barrier, there's no anything. We're talking about hands-on learning. So there's a lot of information regarding that and just a lot of great success stories. And I wrote down the districts that have done it and how they've been successful within their budgets. You know, some were insanely expansive. But yes, there's a lot of interesting stuff with that. So yeah, so maybe a work session that we can discuss in more detail and how it aligns with all of what we're doing here.
Just real quick, my experience basically as a new board member, I had the opportunity to take part in one session, which gave me the opportunity to look at certain things I can do as the new board member and I can't do. And that basically allowed me to see how solid a district we are in regards to certain things that were mentioned in sessions that we were already doing. So I was really impressed in the overall experience. And I look forward to, you know, we have that opportunity again next year.
We'll be in New York in six weeks.
Steve, can I just add one more question? Say something. Okay, can you hear me if I talk loud? Okay. Just one final thing. Every workshop that I went to, there's something that resonated with me. Every presenter said in some way, shape, or form. And I just found it powerful, just reminding us why we're here and reminding us kind of what he was saying to me, the important job that we do. That it is not those kids. It is not them, it is not they. They're our kids. And in essence, they're our families. So I think that's a really important piece that we need to remember when we make these decisions. And I know we all do. I know in our hearts, we all, you know, keep the kids' best interests at heart. But I just found it interesting that in every workshop, that somehow came to the forefront.
Good point. Good takeaway. Comments from the board? Seeing none, move to our final topic, which is public remarks and information. And where is yours, ladies and gentlemen? Chris Hesse, how are you?
Good, thanks. How are you? I would just like to say that I'm very, very impressed with the whole diversity thing and taking the kids on into, because they need that, you know? They need to be exposed to everyone to understand. Because it's not just one little section. It's, you know, they'll go out someday and they'll be in urban areas. You know, and I think it's such a great way to teach all of us to actually see it. And I'm currently reading a book called Stella by Starlight. It's excellent, which I think everybody should read. Because that will show you, you know, suffering. You know, and say you can never have any problems. God, well, I don't really get it, but it's a middle school.
Congratulations. Thank you. Other comments from the public? I know you guys are going to be a little upset, but we don't have an exec session now. So we'll just take a motion, please.